... meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, June... Wait, that's round one. July, what's today, July?
Eighteenth.
Sorry.
Eighteenth, okay. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Shelby, please call the role.
Mr. Carrubus.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
And Ms. Grover.
We have a quorum. Mr. Carrubus, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a public hearing that we have to hold at seven oh five specifically. So I don't think there's anything...
No board announcement.
No.
No, so we have to hold off for four minutes.
Right. Unless you can read yours in four minutes. No, I don't want to rush it.
I can.
Oh, okay. Yes, we can start with some board salutes. So Ms. Grover.
Sure. Granger students win eCyber Mission competition. The board salutes the Granger eighth grade STEM team members Viraj Vyas, Samil Sharma, and Nidhi Sagaram for taking first place in 2021-2022 eCyber Mission competition. The team's project focused on testing an assortment of soil additives to determine which was the most effective in increasing magnesium content in plants in an effort to fight magnesium deficiency in humans. Congratulations to Viraj, Samil, Nidhi on this outstanding accomplishment.
Ms. Fosdick.
2022 Illinois Library Association Librarian of the Year Award winner. The board salutes Kendall Elementary Library Media Center Director Rhonda Jenkins, who was recently named the 2022 Librarian of the Year by the Illinois Library Association. This award recognizes our librarians' distinguished service and leadership in Illinois libraries. The award is presented and sponsored by Today's Business Solutions Incorporated. Congratulations, Rhonda, on this stellar accomplishment.
Mr. Carrubus.
Virtual Enterprise Top 50. The board salutes four District 204 virtual enterprise programs for earning the recognition of a top 50 firm in the nation this year. The programs receiving the recognition are Metanova from Matea Valley and Catalyst Secure, Spectrum, and Summit Smoothie from Nequa Valley. This capstone course provides a simulated business environment in which students create and manage a virtual company, conducting business with other virtual firms nationally and internationally. Congratulations to all.
Do we have time for Ms. Jane? Yours long or no? Okay, all right. Ms. Jane.
National Merit Scholarships. The board salutes District 204 students who were awarded National Merit Scholarships from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation financed by colleges and universities. Five District 204 high school graduates were recently awarded 2022 National Merit Scholarships. These award designees join more than 2,600 other college-sponsored award recipients who were announced in June. From Nequa Valley High School, Ansh Kumar, Amanda M. Eldridge, and Varun A. Ramasubhu; and from Matea Valley High School, Karthik Raj Arukonda and Abhav Garday. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more minute. It is now seven oh five, and I'm calling to order a public hearing for the development of evaluation plan waiver for principals and assistant principals. I need a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Open. Yeah, open. Okay.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the development of evaluation plan waiver for principals and assistant principals.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Any public comments on it?
No public comment.
Dr. Howard, can you just give us an overview?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you are maybe later as well, but...
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the public. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony regarding the district's application for the modification of the Mandate of School Code, which covers the development of evaluation plans for principals and assistant principals, which is Section 105 ILCS 5/24A-15. The proposed modification will change the deadline for the completion of the principal and assistant principal evaluation from March 1st of each year to June 1st of each year. If approved, the modification will be in place for a period of five years. The current act states that the performance evaluation system must assess professional competencies as well as student growth. School districts must ensure that the performance evaluation system is valid and reliable and contributes to the development of staff and improved student outcomes. After nine years of implementation of the principal evaluation system based on these requirements, our district firmly believes that the intent of the law can better be met through a change to the deadline for the principal and assistant principal evaluation summative ratings from March 1st to June 1st. The validity and reliability of the rating can be strengthened by considering professional practice and student growth evidence that spans the entire school year instead of 64% of it. A June 1 completion date allows student growth data from the beginning of year to end of year to be included in the current ratings for the principals. Under the current deadline of March 1st, growth data from the beginning of year to February is used at the elementary and middle levels. This does not capture the growth that takes place from March to the end of the school year. Therefore, the growth rating will not capture the full impact that a complete year of principal leadership has had on student learning. A switch to June 1st will resolve this issue. We firmly believe that the due date of June 1st will provide ample time for completion of data collection and will contribute to a more valid and reliable summative rating for each principal. So this concludes my summary. Are there any questions?
I just want to say, I think this adds to our administrative evaluations to be more robust because it gives us the additional time to review the data and gather the data that's necessary, as she mentioned in her discussion.
So I know this is primarily measuring professional competencies and student growth, like Dr. Howard had mentioned. I'm assuming this will also give district administrators to look at the principals and say, how are they doing as far as their building plan as well? I'm assuming that's all worked into this evaluation and then why we want the...
Yes, they have goals that they have to meet also as part of those professional competencies. It sort of falls under that area.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, so procedural, do we close this public hearing now? Yes. So I need a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Any discussion and closing? No. Okay. Ms. Shelby, please call the role.
Hi. Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Natasha Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Motion passes. We now move to the consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community, I want to start off my comments sharing some good news about grants our district has received recently. First, there was the Freedom School Grant. This grant, which will serve students at Colishaw, Gambert, McCarty, Fisher, Granger, Hill, and Wabonzi, will provide expanded learning time through extracurricular programming. This is a grant for $350,000 that we'll receive for the next three years. Second grant was our Cures After-School Grant. This grant is meant to serve more than 1,000 students across the district by supporting literacy enrichment and STEM as well as support our pre-K students. Funding will support mentoring and college tours for students through a partnership with Guide Write. Additionally, at the elementary level, students will be exposed to junior grade books through an after-school program. Finally, outreach will be done to pre-K families through this grant. This is a grant for $500,000 that we'll receive for the next three years. In our third grant, we received a $500,000 grant for one year from Edward Elmhurst Health Community Investment Fund that will support mental health in our schools. That funding may be continued beyond the first year we put in for three years, but Edward decided all of their grantees this year would only be given money for one year, and then they'll look at it for down the road. I have to thank Dr. Tara Bell for her work in getting these grants across the finish line. They were all coming about the same time, and I also have to thank the school staff who helped to write these grants. These grants will support academic and social-emotional needs for our children. This will be Team IPF's ninth year as a charity partner in the Naperville Healthy Driven Half Marathon and 5K Race in October. Since 2014, Team IPF has had over 2,000 participants who have raised over $1 million for our students. IPF is thrilled to announce their presenting sponsor for 2022 is Aramark. Aramark has been a longstanding partner of Indian Prairie School District and plays an important role in providing custodial services to our schools and district buildings. IPF truly appreciates the support and commitment from Aramark and looks forward to a great race season. I am preparing for that race now. A lot has been happening in our school over the past five weeks. Summertime is not a time for rest. It's time for construction work to happen, as you can see outside of our building now. I just want to name a few of those items that are happening. We have our first IPSD 204 STEM camp that's been taking place. We have over 300 students, siblings, and parents who attended the Beyond the Bell Field Trip on Saturday, July 9th. Our new Executive Director for Education Equity has started his work, and he's already started meeting with school staff and making connections with parents. We have an executed lease for our new Step site. Construction work is in place to make the space meet the needs for Steps, and we'll provide more of an update later. We have been very fortunate with all the capital projects that have been taking place. Some of them have included... We started the final phase on the elementary project, expected to be completed by the fall of 2023. This work includes the air conditioning of the media centers at the schools. Asphalt work at Still, Colishaw, and Prairie preschool parking lots in Matea, Wabonzi, and Nequa tennis courts are being done. Masonry work at five schools, including Scullin, Colishaw, Springbrook, Brookdale, and Granger. And we've been remodeling the family and consumer science labs at Matea and Wabonzi Valley. And I also think also at Nequa, we've been doing some work there too with their family and consumer science labs. Later in September, we'll provide a more detailed update on all the facility work that has taken place this summer. Suffice it to say that this is good for us to have this work being done, and we're pleased that we are seeing it happen now. Before turning the meeting back to Ms. Donahue, I would like to request that the Board had approved the appointment of Ms. Elizabeth Amade as Assistant Director of Student Services. Ms. Amade is actually returning to Indian Prairie School District where she used to work at Georgetown. Her last assignment before coming back to us was at Yorkville Middle School with Yorkville Community District 115, where she was an assistant principal. We are very pleased to welcome her back to the district. And I also ask that the board approve the recommendation by the IPF board to accept the resignation of and replace the Executive Director of the Foundation. We are...I'm asking that we approve Dr. Trudy Ranson, who will be the new Executive Director of the Foundation, replacing Ms. Alicia Johnson, who has resigned. And now I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve Elizabeth Amade as the Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Elizabeth Amade as Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the role?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right. Next, we move to our consent agenda item. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion for the approval of the Consent Agenda Items E through S.
This is Allison Fosdick. I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through S as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I would like to say that Alicia Johnson was a wonderful supporter and leader of our IPEF group, and we will definitely miss her, but we are absolutely thrilled to see Dr. Trudy Ranson taking responsibility for this important role and instrumental group and friend of our district. So we are absolutely thrilled that you are going to be in that position and look forward to the wonderful things that you'll help create in this district, like you've done with PTAs and IPPC over the years. So thank you. All right. So, Michelle, will you call the role? Is there any other discussion?
We concur.
Ms. Jan.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
And Mr. Rising.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve the development of evaluation plan waiver for principals and assistant principals as presented.
As per the public hearing, I will make a motion for the approval of the developmental and evaluation plan waiver for principals and assistant principals as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion? Michelle, will you please call the role?
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve the substitute teaching work by Allison Fosdick for up to $1,000 as presented.
I move that we approve substitute teaching by Ms. Allison Fosdick, up to $1,000.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Would you like to say anything?
I think your help as a substitute will be greatly appreciated in the district. I know I've found it very rewarding, and I know that as a board, I had almost all of you approach about doing substitute teaching, so we have to have a few of you not be substitutes so that we can vote on substitute issues if we need to. So, but I'm pleased and welcome to the substitute group. So, Michelle, will you please call the role?
I will be pursuing some janitorial...
No, okay. They need bus drivers, yeah.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
I abstain.
Yeah. I think I didn't vote to. I vote yes. All right. The motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve the School Resource Officer, SRO, intergovernmental agreements with the City of Naperville and the City of Aurora as presented.
I move that the Board approve the SRO intergovernmental agreements with the City of Naperville and Aurora as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. Is there a change in this particular intergovernmental agreement?
The real change is the mentioning of body warm cameras that the both, not just Aurora and Naperville, but across the whole state, police are required to wear, and so this mentions this. We will have training for administrators by the SROs in August about what that will look like.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, we've had wonderful relationships with the City of Aurora, the City of Naperville, and their police departments, and they've provided wonderful SRO services that our students really feel, you know, connection to a lot of those SROs, and they're very welcomed in the schools. So, thanks to those cities.
All right. Michelle, will you please call the role?
Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
And Mr. Rising.
Yes.
The motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve the Gifts and Donations Report for the second semester and end of year for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Make a motion for the approval of the Gifts and Donations Report for the second semester and end of the year for 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
This was something we had a presentation on, right? That this is just wrapping up the final donation report, I think.
Yeah, we do a yearly report about this to the board.
Yep, okay.
And I think we pointed this out before, how absolutely generous our community is with their donations and support, businesses, families, teachers, staff. The contributions that they made are significant and greatly appreciated, and IPEF also is a wonderful partner and donor for the district. So fantastic support from the community. Michelle, will you call the role?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
The motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve the action regarding a student discipline matter as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the action regarding the student discipline matter as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the role?
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
Mr. Rising. Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right, on to discussion items. We will now have a presentation from Mr. Brian Giovanni regarding amended DAOES intergovernmental
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Tally, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I will say what DAOES actually stands for here in a second. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give a quick overview of an updated intergovernmental agreement between Indian Prairie School District 204 and the DuPage Area Occupational Educational System within our district and our county. So a little bit about what the purpose is will give some information about the agreement, what's changed, as well as the purpose of why it's being updated. It's not been updated since 1986 and is required by all EFEs to update their agreements at this time. So what does DAOS do? As I mentioned, it stands for the DuPage Area Occupational Education System and really supports the DuPage County in terms of the career and technical education in two ways. One, supporting the Career Center, Technology Center of DuPage. So DAOS oversees Technology Center of DuPage, which offers course options for our 11th and 12th grade students, who have the option to go there for half... ... management, as well as some other CT, big, larger ticket items, and support us at the state level for things that are changing and things that we can do across the district and county as a whole. So who's part of this agreement and this EFE? It is basically all the school districts in DuPage County, in addition to Lyons Township. It's all high schools are supported and work together in this fashion. You'll see here two different groups. The original members in 1972. 1972, eight of the original school districts joined what was called Davia at the time to build the Career Center, and those original districts use some individual district funding to support, build, and develop that Career Center. After 1972, additional districts, including 204, joining in 1990, have joined. That's important for something that I'll share here in a little bit. So some of the things that our students can take advantage of at Technology Center of DuPage in their 11th and 12th grade year are up on the screen and on your PowerPoint. Some of the big-ticket programs that our students take advantage of are Cosmetology, Fire Science, and Nursing Assistant Training Program. At the Technology Center of DuPage, our students not only have an opportunity to earn certifications in some of these programs, but in addition to credentials and dual credit through the College of DuPage and other community colleges in the state. If a student enters Cosmetology, for example, in their junior year and meet the requirements and credentials, they can leave with that endorsement and that credential that they can go in and start working right after high school. There is a significant time component to that. Not only do they have to do... They have to work and then maintain to earn that credential. So there is a significant time component that students have to do, but they can leave high school with that credential. So what... Many of the things are updates, requirements, and recommendations by the lawyer, making sure all the language is consistent from the 1986 document, where it changed from Davia to DAOS, making sure that all the language is consistent. Expectations, the EFE are... are outlined in that document as we look at security and student information privacy going back and forth between ourselves and Technology Center of DuPage. The other component that is outlined in this agreement is the dissolution language in the event that Technology Center of DuPage does close by a two-thirds vote, and outlining what that would look like if that happens. some initial money. There was a land survey and evaluated at $19 million. So if the Technology Center of DuPage ever does close, those original districts will get their money back based on that, and then will be split up evenly based on enrollment of the last 10 years for all the districts within the EFE. So what does this look like, next steps? Every school district in the EFE will be doing the same process, and we'll be...we ask that the intergovernmental agreement is voted on at the August 8th board meeting, and then we will go back and share this agreement with DuPage County and once...or with Technology Center of DuPage, and once nine of the districts, it'll become official, and now a newly adopted intergovernmental agreement. At this time, do you have any questions for me?
I just want to say one thing. One of our student representatives, Matea Sayad Kareshi, attends the program there. He'll be a senior working on his EMT certification. So just know what great programs that they have over there.
Any discussion? I'm not going to call on each person.
Two points that I'd like...
Two points that I'd like to bring up that I raised prior to the meeting are, one, I'd like to see an annual report from administration to the board annually on outstanding intergovernmental agreements that the district has. I'm embarrassed to admit that I didn't know we had one in this area. I've been a board member for a number of years. Obviously, this goes back to when I was actually a student.
1986 is a long time ago.
Right, exactly. So, but I think from a board oversight perspective, we should see the intergovernmental agreements that are out there. I know we have a number of them, including some that we just approved tonight. So I'd like to see on an annual basis at least a report from administration on the outstanding intergovernmental agreements. I know it's just up for discussion, but the changes in the administrative code talk about amending the agreement to require both equitable access and non-discrimination. And I'd like some discussion from administration on how the program is going to kind of balance those two. Because there, I think there is, although there are separate and different aspects, I think there's an overlap where there's a potential to discriminate if you were to be overly equitable and vice versa. So I'd like to, I know it's a change in state law and it's kind of an update to the program, to the agreement to comply with state law. But I'd like to hear some feedback from administration or the program, the system, about how it wants to make sure that it does both of those things and not do it in such a way that it conflicts.
Absolutely, I can bring that up at the next DAOS board meeting in August. Share that feedback.
Is there any other comments?
I do have just a couple of questions. Some kind of along the lines of Board Member Carubus. If we can include, just get an idea of the participation from our district as far as students that are taking advantage, that would be great as well. Question, does there any impact financially, budgetary wise?
On the school district for students to attend?
Correct.
Yes, for each student that attends, we pay a tuition to the Technology Center of DuPage to support the instruction for our students at that school district on an individual basis. It is roughly just under $6,000.
And the other sort of, I guess, a comment to, for the administration. One thing that we've talked about over a number of years is trying to increase the relationship with COD as far as opportunities for dual credit and our students to be able to take advantage of opportunities for them to potentially walk out of their high school opportunity with a collegiate associate degree as there are many community colleges that are very close to us that have those type of relationships. So just wanted to bring that up again. It's not necessarily correct for everyone, but it can be advantageous, especially if there are students who are staying in this state for, to enter school at a four-year college.
Actually, Brian Gianvinini, Doug Ikarius, and a few others, we've had a meeting about that today.
I'll look forward to those updates as we, as you continue those conversations. Thanks.
Any other comments? It's an important option for our students and I think it is very beneficial, especially if they can put in the hours and get certifications walking out after attending those programs. So thank you for updating this, what, 35-plus-year-old document? So that's, that's pretty impressive, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
We will now have a presentation from Mr. Doug Ikarius regarding ESER 3.
Good evening, Dr. Tally, Board of Education and Community. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. One of the components of the ESER funding or the federal funding that we received in response to the COVID-19 pandemic was the use of these funds and ensuring that we are transparent with our community about how we plan to spend those funds. It's not a long presentation because what you'll notice is that we are really trying to continue over the last couple of years with our funding, which was always our plan. The information that you see on this slide is also posted on our website so that any community members, it directs them on there that they can email me if they have any questions or comments related to how we are spending these funds. I also want to thank, there's many members of both administration as well as from our building teams, our district office teams, who've worked together on trying to support the work that's being supported in these grants and also in just trying to accomplish those things that we intend to accomplish with it. You've seen this slide before. These were the top 10 schools by enrollment in the state and what they received in federal funding. You'll see we're in the yellow there. Originally, it was called CARES 1. That was the first round that we received right in the beginning. ESER 2, and that was the second round. We've already presented on how we've used those funds. And then ESER 3, which is actually called American Rescue Plan. It's under ARP is how we see that funds. That was the last installment from this. When you see that I talk about the actual breakdown, you're going to see that's a little bit higher amount than that because the state had a reserve amount of funds federally as well. And they've also added that on a distribution to the states. So our amount, just like every other school district, is going to be higher than what you see on this sheet. Last time when I presented, there were some questions, too, about our comparatives as well as some other local school districts. We see some of those on here, like Oswego, 203, Valley View, Plainfield, all unit districts near us, relatively close, but I wanted to make sure that you saw the ones that we also use for comparatives and some other local ones, which you'll see on this slide. So we're part of those top eight that we typically use as comparatives. That goes down through Naperville 203 there. You'll notice that our per-student allotment is still at its second lowest when you look at those eight with Elmhurst. From what I can tell, it has the lowest per-student allotment. And then you'll see the other two that we added that were local, since we had most of the other large unit districts on there, also added East and West Aurora and the funding they received as well. So for the American Rescue Plan, the ESER 3 specifics allocation included, this included the original allocation of that $8,482,374. We also received an additional $870,829 allocation from the State Reserve for a total of $9,353,203. As I said, all school districts received additional state funding. I'm not sure if they did it as a certain percentage or how they calculated that. 20% of your original allocation must be used, and they use that term "learning loss" all over the budgets that we had to submit for this under the ESER grants. We had to identify that under each item, which one was for LEA learning loss, which one was for state reserve learning loss, and so on. There was a lot that went into this budget. 71.4% of the state reserve allocation must be used to address learning loss. And the remaining state reserve allocation must be used for summer enrichment and after-school support. So you had to identify that across the whole things. Those amounts for a district our size weren't great. We're appreciative of the amounts, but some of them were taken up very quickly by like transportation and so on. Indirect allocation must be less than 12.7% of the total allocation. Indirect allocation is, that's where we do not have to put in the budget exactly what we're using those funds for, which also means when we do our expenditure reports. So with every grant we receive, we receive a lot of grants in our district. A lot of the federal grants have some different requirements, as well as our state grants, but one of those is like quarterly expenditure reports, including what did we do to spend towards that? So on indirect, you don't have to put all the specifics on an expenditure report either. Your district's going to receive that indirect amount with the rest of their funding. The reason they do that is you might say that you're budgeting $350,000 for summer school, but it might come out to $420,000 for summer school. So it gives you a little bit of cushion there, not knowing, especially like one with this where we're preparing for two years' worth. We're taking a guess on what we think that budget amount, how close we are going to be to that. There's also some things that would be, well, they wouldn't be time-effective or resource-effective to try to track for an expenditure report that we would use this for. Over the past couple of years, we've used indirect funds when we're looking at substitutes, whether it's hourly or daily, because you cannot just say, oh, we spent this amount on substitutes in expenditure report. You have to put every single person's name and exactly how many hours or days they did for subbing. And so you can imagine what kind of reports would have to go in that. So those are reasons why you would have indirect and an allowable amount of indirect. Our indirect for this one, we, we're not up to the 12.7%. We're less than that, but it is a sizable amount that you would see that would help us with any kind of overages over the next two years or in case there's any emergency situations. You know, for some reason, if we needed to order more materials to cover something or something else comes up or some other mandate comes up from the state, we would have funds that would help us support those situations. All right, on the website, and you would see this under business. If you go to our website, you see business and there's going to be some forms listed right at the top of that page. One of those is going to be ESER 3 spending plan or use of funds plan. When you see that on here, it's going to talk a little bit about what we are potentially spending that money on. It will end with this chart on there. I did put the link on here for anybody who's watching or looking at the presentation. If they click on that, that'll just take them to our website. And it has my contact information on there. If you do have any questions or want more specifics about our plan for spending, you'll be able to access that through that area. Supporting learning loss, as I said, you need to spend at least 20%. We're way higher than that. Almost all of ours is going under the category of how the state or federal defines learning loss. Those includes our reduction in elementary class size, summer learning and enrichment, so that's staff salaries and benefits, summer school supplies, transportation, summer reading and math supplies. We've been sending this home with the students the last two years. We plan and continue to do that. We've received very good feedback on that. We're also including more STEM enrichment supplies in this. After-school programming, our eye-ready assessment, any diagnostic assessment would also fall under learning loss. And then additional academic support, literacy coordinator, math coordinator, parent community engagement specialist, academic coaches, case manager, math specialist, interventionist. As we've communicated, our Title funding has also decreased quite a bit. So we are using some funding in here to support some of those things that we've been doing under Title I funding that we no longer can afford. And so some of those things are also happening through this funding, which will also be on this next slide. Transportation to support pre-K satellite transportation. I shouldn't have said that twice, sorry. But on there, this is, we used to cover that out of Title I for all of our Title students at pre-K to get services. We no longer are able to fund that through Title I. So we're going to be funding it through this for the next two years. That is not considered under learning loss. That's why you would see this on this other kind of remaining funds. Supplies for McKenna Vento students, social, emotional, learning, and wellness coordinator position. Health protocol support, so you saw this on the previous, on CARES 1 and ESER 2. That was, if you recall, we did not have full-time nurses in our schools at the elementary level. We increased that. We also had our nursing coordinator be full-time as a nursing coordinator, not trying to also cover a building at the same time. So that's still going to continue to support that over the next two years. And then additional student supplies, materials, and resources. We've budgeted items for that as well. Some of those for enrichment, some of those for STEM, some of those for additional things there. And then we have that indirect amount, which is $1,048,086. That'd be a little over $500,000 for each of the two years to cover any additional costs that would, could be associated with really anything that occurs in the school district that would support learning loss, enrichment, after-school programming, and so on. So with that, I am more than happy to take any questions.
All right, Mr. Rising?
Just a couple of comments, not really questions. I just wanted to thank administration for, I think this is our fourth ESER presentation in two years. I think the first one was December 2020. We've since had three of those. And by my count, we've had eight meetings in the past two years where we've discussed ESER funds and where we're putting that money. And we've been totally transparent with the community, which I greatly appreciate. And I especially appreciate that that is going all towards our students, the majority of that, and learning loss. I will reserve my, no, I won't reserve my comments. I, I, I'm still, it still frustrates me the way they funded this to look at how we received roughly just under $500 per student and another district with almost the same size student count received $7,800 per student. Now, I understand there was a lot of factors into that, primarily, you know, low income and that type of thing. But, you know, it is what it is. And I'm appreciative of this. And just one other thing, I wanted to make sure that is clear is that, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe this is a question for you, Doug, but every single school district across the country received these ESER funds, correct?
Yes. I think there were some schools very close to zero, just how things might have worked out on their, as you know, it's the poverty level that played a big role into the amount of ESER funds you received. That's why ours landed where they're at, because they took one, one year, one snapshot in time and that's how they determined that. So, but every school, I believe, received something.
Across, across all 50 states?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's all I have.
Yeah. One other thing with that, just, you know, you heard me say about helping us get through some of our Title I crunch in funds. As Matt will probably talk about in his presentation a little bit, too, is that we are hopeful that within two years, when we get through this, that that census data from 2020 will hopefully kick in for Title I and that that gets readjusted by the time we're done with this funding. That's one of the things we're hopeful for at that time. If not, that could definitely present some challenges for us, additional challenges. It's decreased significantly. I, I, I know I probably have said it too many times, but we were receiving 1.9 million, I believe, five years ago. Now we're 837,000, I think. And our numbers of low-income students have not decreased. So that's our numbers. Even though our enrollments decreased, our numbers of low-income students have not.
Ms. Demming?
I'm, I'm good. I was going to ask Doug to share once again. Board Member Rising already shared and expressed the frustration that we all have. I was just going to ask you to, once again, share how that determination was made, just so the public is reminded. But you, you did that, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Fosdick?
I know I share the same frustration.
I know I share the same frustration. However, we talked at the very beginning of the meeting about the grants that we got and this funding. And I know that we all are grateful for any and all funding we can get. So I am thankful for these funds, whatever they are, to be able to address some of these things that I know that we wanted to address anyway. And it's unfortunate that COVID is the reasoning for it, but the fact that we're able to reduce some elementary class sizes, for example, or provide summer reading and math supplies for our students, those are wonderful benefits that we can provide from these funds. So despite the fact that it would be nice if we had more.
Very grateful.
We're very grateful for what we do have and for all of these additions that we're able to provide for our students, I think are incredible and important and
I will say, three of the grants that we received, the Cures, the Freedom Schools Grant and the SEL Grant, all three of those competitive grants were also due to federal funding that was set aside that we applied for and received. So under that same, I mean, you know, it's been extremely beneficial to our students to have all this additional funding.
All right. Ms. Jane.
Thank you, Doug, for your presentation. I think I echo what many of my fellow board members have stated thus far. I think it's very easy as a community member to just think, oh, the district got $13 million and, you know, and feel like, oh, well, what are they doing? Or question, question how that money's being used. But with the four presentations, what you guys have done was really stretched each dollar, like really tried to see how best we can utilize these funds. And I'm really appreciative of how transparent you've been. And I also appreciate the requirement of the learning loss focus and how you delineated how those services would be applied to address learning loss. Could you remind us again, looking at slide number five, beyond 2024, which of these services we hope to keep moving forward?
Sure. There's a, I will say this, in going through some of these fundings, like in our first year, we had to use 100% funding to also do like the mental health coordinator. When we got the SEL Grant, we were able to put part in there and so take part of it out of here and so we can use more of this money to support other things. So we did have to do some shifting that way. I know one of the things that we're, those top three are 100% things that we've talked about that need to stay in place after 2024. Summer learning, we want to continue growing our summer learning. We want to continue providing supports for students who need either to get caught up or just need a boost before they start the following year. But we also want to expand for more enrichment opportunities too and try to keep that at the most minimal cost that we can. And so for me, I think we have to find a way to keep our nursing supports at full-time at elementary. We were already seeing a lot of, I would say, health or medical needs of why we need to have people there a full day, especially like with our diabetic students in those types of situations. So I would like for that to stay in place. I-Ready, we're really liking what that assessment provides early on. So I envision that we're going to try to find a way to do that. It's hard to say what we would not do moving forward. I would hope that we can find ways to continue doing all these things if possible. We've stretched that 13 million out over four years is our current plan. And so there might be things that, I think some of the things we would probably have to stop right away would be probably sending the books home over the summer. That's a large amount. So there's, I think, things like that that add up quickly to, you know, large funding. And so we're going to stay, I think we're hitting a little bit of our capacity on grants, but we're going to keep going at it to get more funding. And I think maybe we'll see other opportunities at that point in time. On Cures I and ESER II, they also stretched those out a little bit farther than their original due dates. Like, we're still spending ESER II. We're almost done with ESER II. After summer school, we should be there. That's a little bit longer. We're hoping the same thing happens with the American Rescue Plan funds, that we, that those will stretch out into that 2024-25 school year, get us a little bit farther, you know. But, and we continue to assess how effective these things are and how many students are taking advantage of them. So I wish I could be clear on exactly what's, it's going to be hard to make those decisions on what we're not going to be able to afford after this point in time, after that point in time.
I appreciate that. I, one of the things that I think is kind of the silver lining in these past few years is being able to try these new services and try things that maybe we wouldn't have been able to do in the past, and then also realize the value and the needs of our student body and faculty in terms of what they need. So, thank you.
Ms. Grover.
I just wanted to say I'm so appreciative of the proactiveness of the administration to get the funds, get the grants. Like Dr. Tally had mentioned about the mental health clinics, and then you guys find the grants and get the money for it. I mean, there's so much that happens, so much hard work. So, thank you.
Mr. Krubus.
Building on prior discussions and to just drill home the point, in FY '25, we're going to have 4.2 million come out of our budget approximately. And so we allocated 975 the year prior to reduce elementary class sizes. And to say that we're going to continue that program means it's going to come from local funds. And that means it's going to come from previously allocated funds for other priorities. So I think it's nice to say we're going to continue some of these things, but it's a budget. And that gets balanced against other priorities as well. So I think we need to put that in perspective and plan accordingly.
Did you want to comment?
I would agree 100% with what you're saying. Before we make any decision about what items we are going to bring forward, we have a conversation with the chief school business officer to make sure, is this something that we can continue? One of the things I wanted to be very careful about when I did, I said we were going to do class size reduction, is to make sure we could continue it out after the funding left. I didn't want to start something that we'd have to pull away. But I agree with you, we have to be very careful about this and understand the balance. It's all about a balance. And I think all of us agree, and you'll see a video later, I won't say anymore, regarding something. And so I think we'll agree that class sizes is something that we all want to have. The mental health coordinator is another thing that is really helpful, because without it, and I have said this before, and I will say it again, we would not have gotten the grant for the mental health clinics, because it took people to write that grant. And so you have to have people who are there and have the ability, spend the time to focus on it. And so it helps us tremendously. So I agree, we have to balance it out.
We noticed that right away. We thought parent community engagement specialists were going to be a one-year thing. We noticed that we had to continue that in certain spots. It was a, it's a critical position in some of our buildings right now. So we're going to be 100% faced with those same questions after 2024.
So going back to slide two and three, I know everyone made comments on this earlier, but it would be easy for the public to look at this and think we did something wrong, that we only got about $500 per student and these other districts got a lot. And I just want to repeat that it was the profile of our district and the formula that was used for funding by the federal government led to this result. And we would change it in an instant if we had any ability to do so.
Yeah. It's really the importance of the census data, because they had to have a federal way. And really, the only way they have that is that poverty level and the Title allocations. And that's what they use to, that they felt they could equitably kind of spread out the money across all 50 states. We already know in our district that it's, that doesn't connect. You'll notice on these lists that some of these districts are Tier I. Tier II, we're a Tier II. You see some that are on here that are Tier IV. That means they're over what they need to adequately meet the needs of their students. We're under that as a Tier II, but that did not play into how funding was distributed. I will say this, on some of our competitive grants, they did give an advantage to Tier I and Tier II districts. And so we did benefit from that in the rubric when we were applying for some of those competitive grants. So that was definitely helped us in those situations.
That's good to know. Yeah. A little point there. And, you know, as Ms. Jane and others said, we are eternally grateful for the 13 million that we received. And you have, we've been very transparent with how we're spending that money and very judicious with what we choose to put that money on. And I think we've found some of these things that are on slide five, most, all of them have been extremely beneficial. And I would hate to see any of them yank back, because we don't have sufficient funding after we don't have ESER funds anymore. So, you know, it's something that we will always balance our budget. And as things come in, other things have to be adjusted to accommodate them or other changes have to be made. So class sizes is definitely something that this entire board has been extremely focused on and addressing. And I think that we saw good benefits from what we did in the past year. So, thank you. And thank you for all the grant work, too. That's really significant in adding to our resources in the district. So thank you very much.
Yeah. I know Dr. Tally thanked Dr. Bell. She's been amazing with her grant work. Dawn Monkman in our department, trying to keep track of every grant that we're receiving and every single dollar that's spent, takes a lot of time and effort. And we have other people in the department like Dawn Forkner, Candy Michelli, who've worked aggressively on that SEL Grant, our principals working on the current Freedom and Cures ones. But then just being able to do that in their buildings and assure that these funds are being used wisely is critical as well. One more thing, on the website where we have that link, as we, as the budget changes, we'll update on that page about how things are. Like, if something came out a little less or a little more, we'll update on that and how that relates to the indirect as well. Or we might also include on there indirect, we're using it, spending it on this, even though they might not see that in the expenditure reports and stuff, just so the community knows how those funds are being spent as well.
All right. Thank you. We will now have a presentation from Mr. Matt Shipley regarding the 2022-2023 tentative budget.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, I am presenting the fiscal year 2023 tentative budget. That's our tentative budget for the 2022-2023 school year. So we operate on a fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th in a way that corresponds with the school year. Tonight's presentation consists with Board Policy 4.10, as well as the 2122 School Year District Goal Number Three, and the strategic plan goals that'll be coming out in August, and we'll be presenting to the board in August related to our financial, fiscal resources, accountability and responsibility. This is actually the third presentation of, that includes budget information for the fiscal year 2023. So tonight's presentation will really move forward the discussion February 28th and May 16th, when I presented forecast and budget financial information to the board. Agenda tonight, first, I just want to cover really the budget objectives or some of the main goals we had as the administration worked to put together to the budget presentation for this evening, as well as the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So before we look at any numbers or financial statements or graphs, really just wanted to have an opportunity to talk through what those four objectives were going forward. We will then move into where we will look at some financial statements and graphs and numbers when we look at what the actual tentative operating budget is. We'll cover that both in terms of revenues and expenditures, move on to our non-operating funds tentative budget, and then finally, I'll close with the next steps and questions related to, again, the 22-23 budget. So first of all, just wanted to cover that our first budget objective was to be consistent with Tonight's budget that we're presenting is an operated, is a balanced operating budget. It's a budget that maintains sufficient operating fund balance or the reserves we need to operate the budget in a fiscally responsible manner. These are the two main drivers, which project us to receive recognition status from the State Board of Education. This is the highest status that the State Board awards, and again, recognizes that the district is in a financially stable position. Tonight's presentation is part of a transparent and accountable process as we work to build the annual budget. That includes both the annual budget hearing and budget posting that'll occur next month before we formally adopt the budget. It includes having annual financial and compliance audits completed. Compliance audits cover a variety of the grants, both federal and state grants we receive, as well as just our compliance with the general state school code and state laws and regulations governing school districts. We are current with all regulatory filings that Including many of these postings and audits I just mentioned are available conveniently at ipsd.org/businessoffice. Those are first budget objective. The second budget objective that we've focused on for the school year is, it's already been brought up as part of the ESER funding discussion, is reduce class sizes at the K2 levels. And while, well, you could hear some of the benefits of that from me. I do have a brief video, which will allow you to hear directly from some of our teachers and administrators who directly benefited from this during the first year we implemented these reduced class sizes.
District 204 has been able to reduce class sizes because of the ESER funding. It has been a longstanding dream of 204 staff and administration to be able to reduce class sizes. Reducing class sizes at the kindergarten through second grade level is important, because it has a tremendous impact on the instructional quality and the relational quality that teachers are able to have with students.
Academically, I have seen students really grow because they have had more interaction between students and teachers. So I know I was able to do more one-on-one and small group instruction. And in doing so, I'm able to support the kids and challenge them for their specific skill set.
And that relationships aren't just from teacher to student, it's also from student to student. So you can see the domino effect of benefits of a small classroom, because it just builds this community, which then allows you to have high expectations for one another.
Class sizes have definitely impacted teachers. And I think that first piece is their feeling of success.
My teachers feel better about the job that they're able to do, because I, they feel that they're making a bigger difference. They're able to individualize instruction more so. They're able to get a deeper connection with their students. They're able to interact with families more. When you've got that small class size, you really can focus greater attention on each and every kid.
Because of the smaller class sizes, I was really able to create some great relationships with my students. And that has made all the difference for my students and for me in the classroom. I saw lots of smiles and many days I had a great smile on my face also.
By having smaller class sizes has impacted me by one less stress. We know teachings Now, we know teaching's a hard job. So being able to have maybe a hill to climb versus a mountain to climb has impacted me too. Just, I've been here a long time. I've been teaching a long time in this district. And it, it's something we've been saying for a while, so you feel like you're being heard.
I think it is an incredible initiative that our district is taking. And I really do think it makes a difference. And I, I think it helps our teachers to feel better about the job that they do because they do a pretty amazing job. And this is just one of those things that helps them feel that greater impact that they have for kids. Because in the end, that's all that we all want to have is that great impact.
All right, so hopefully that, that explained why this has been one of our key budget objectives. And again, it's a goal that goes back several years. And we're, we're excited. This is our second year we've been able to reduce class sizes at the K2 level specifically. And again, as we mentioned during Doug's presentation, we planned this for the duration of Esser funds, as well as this being a priority for us to continue with funding with local funds after those Esser funds program is complete. Third budget objective was really to increase mental health and LCL supports throughout the district. We have heard from many of our school communities, our community at large, many students who've even spoken directly at the board meeting about how important this priority was. So we have worked at all three levels to increase mental health and SEL supports just by reconfiguring some of our FTE allotments. So this includes additional special education teachers focused on our self-contained programming and the schools that have additional self-contained needs or classrooms. We're adding SEL coaches, social worker positions at both the middle and high school levels. We've also added a district-wide 504 plan coordinator to assist our, our teachers and our school providers as they work with students with 504 plans. We have seen an increase in 504 plans and those related service needs, really directly as a result of COVID-19. And so this is, this is an opportunity to, to address those, those challenges and needs within our buildings as well. The final, the final budget objective that we had in creating this budget is really trying to invest back in our schools. Dr. Tally spoke about many of the projects that are going on currently this summer. So some of those projects are funds that are going to be funded by this budget, as well as projects we're already starting to, to work and plan on for, during the school year and next summer. Tonight's budget includes $16 million available for capital projects. $3 million increase from what we discussed last in the May board meeting. This, these projects we're looking to fund through a combination of both operating local funds, some non-operating funds, as well as some grant funds that are specific for capital projects. This is the largest since the district was building schools. So 15-plus years ago, since we completed Matia Valley High School. So we are, we are also excited about this being a priority and being able to allocate resources capital investment. I just want to talk briefly about the picture I have here. Again, this was a project Dr. Tally mentioned. This is the fax room at Matia Valley. We are working on a full renovation of those fax, fax, family and consumer science rooms at Matia and Wobanzie. And this, this really, I, I think is a good project to talk through why we've prioritized allocating additional money to capital. This is a project that's going to impact our students directly. We've seen an increase in students pursuing the consumer science programs, not just as maybe a one-class elective, but really as a potential career opportunity in culinary arts or in hospital. So this is going to really reconfigure those rooms and allow them to support some of that advanced programming. Give students additional experience with equipment or, equipment or other kitchen appliances that they may see in more of a restaurant setting as opposed to just, just their own homes. So this really is a project that students are directly going to see and, and impact our programming. And, you know, when we've had smaller budgets in the five million or six million dollar range, really, we, we don't have any money left over for these sort of projects. So our hope is that with this additional allocation, and again, additional allocation towards capital over the next several years, we continue to see projects like this that have more of a direct impact on our programming and our student achievement. So with that said, I will transition into our tentative operating budget. And again, this is the legal form of the tentative operating budget as required by the State Board of Education. We maintain six operating funds, which are each shown here. That's the education fund, operations and maintenance, transportation, IMRF and social security, so employee benefits, working cash, and then finally, a toward immunity fund. Of these, the far largest. But I'll talk in, in total real quick. We are budgeting just short of $402 million in revenue for the 2223 school year, with expenditures, again, just under $402 million as well. So this is a balanced budget. When combining that, that slight increase over the year with our projected beginning fund balance, we estimate we will end the 2223 year with fund balance of $147.8 million. And that would represent about 37% of revenues. The, the amount that the State Board of Education requires to meet that recognition status is 25%. So we continue to be above that 25% and continue to have a little cushion above that, although it's not what, what I think we'd consider to be a, a significant cushion above that 25%. That does translate into just over four months' worth of operating reserves at June 30th. With, with that, I do just want to provide the Board a quick update on some of the, the changes or modifications we've made to the budget since we last met in May. Again, some of these have already been talked about because they're, they're grant-related. So the first one is we have been awarded 1.5 million in capital grants awarded through the state of Illinois. These are funds that are specific for capital programs. And again, goes towards that 16 million of capital expenditures. We're budgeting for through work with our state legislators, with Representative Janet Yang-Ror and Representative Stephanie Kifewitz's office. Our plan is to use these funds in a combination with local funds to address playgrounds throughout the district. And so we were hoping next summer to start with nine to 12 playground renovations. All playgrounds in our district are upwards of 20 years old. And this has really been an exciting project to, to get going and to start talking about. Again, an opportunity to have a project that our community can directly see and interact with on a daily basis. Again, 850,000 of competitively awarded federal grants have been included in this budget. These are the Freedom Schools Grant and the Outstanding Grant applications during his grant update in May. And then similarly, the Edward Elmer's Hospital Group has awarded us a $500,000 grant that will support community health needs. Other budget updates, the first one is, is a, a good news and a significant piece of good news. And that's, we've increased the budget $3 million in investment income. And that's primarily a result of recent interest rate increases. So we were fortunate that, as I'm sure you're aware, the Federal Reserve has worked somewhat aggressively in somewhat unprecedented manner to increase the amount of interest that's paid on short-term, short-term holdings. They did this almost days before, two days before we received the annual property tax installment. So this did have a direct impact on the, on our ability to, to invest district funds. We do invest very conservatively and only in the highest credit and generally speaking, short-term investments. So some of the investments that were most directly impacted by that rate increase are what the district invests in. So that, that's the good news. This is likely a one-time increase. I think if you follow the news, like, we're already starting to hear about, have these interest rates been too much? And is the Federal Reserve going to look to decrease them starting in 2023? So knowing that this is likely a one-time or unpredictable increase, this, we're looking to primarily use to fund additional capital outlay. And that's really what's driving that increase from the last presentation in May. And again, this is a, a one-time increase and it's a, it's significant dollar amount. But it does, does not go far enough to offset the rising costs we're seeing by inflation or the amount legislation, which again, limits what our property tax levy will be. Limits it to 5% compared with that 7% inflation number. Two, a couple other quick budget updates. We will be returning to pre-pandemic meal service in our school cafeterias this year. So we've updated the budget and are beginning to update our operations accordingly. That means students, we will still have a free and reduced lunch program for students who qualify, but a majority of our students will be back to paying for lunch. But we are excited about being able to go back to operate, offering the expanded offerings at our, all three levels. Offering a hot meal service at our elementary and middle school level. So although we will be charging for meals, we, we do believe there's an operational benefit that, that our students will see as a result of that. The Board did approve this evening a 300,000, approximately $300,000 purchases related to driver's education vehicles. This is, been updated in this budget. And this was really the impact of a, of the shortage that the, we see in the used car market. Over the last nine years, the district has received donated dealer vehicles from Dan Wolf Toyota. And just given the, the changes in that market and the challenges, they were unfortunately not able to provide that this school year. They did work with us and I, to identify used cars, vehicles that would be available for purchase and would help us continue our driver's education program. They have agreed to install that, that passenger brake. That's much needed during driver's education, as well as handle any maintenance needs we have. Driver's education cars do have some more maintenance challenges than other vehicles. So we're excited to continue that partnership with Dan Wolf in other ways, even though unfortunately, we won't receive those, those dealer vehicles like we have in the past. And then finally, again, Dr. Tally mentioned his update as well. But we have updated the budget to reflect that our STEP students will be transitioning into a new space for next year. That's a rented space that we've agreed to a five-year lease for. And the, the related costs for that, we are splitting between two federal grants. So I do want to point out that these, this will not be funded with local funds. And specifically, that DRS grant, a lot of why this was possible and one of the challenges we've had in the past with funding this was really because that DRS grant has increased over the past several years. And that's a grant we received directly because of the student placements and the successful outcomes we see coming out of that STEP program. So this is really an opportunity that became available because of the success we're seeing from our STEP students and that, that program. So just wanted to highlight how the revenues look when we look at the 2023 budget. And I know in the past, we've kind of compared this with, with maybe the, the year prior or have talked in general terms about how consistent our revenues have stayed over, over the past several years. This evening, we are comparing the 2023 budget on the left half of the screen with the 2002 annual report. And I think this, this really goes to show that other than some slight changes in the colors and graphics we use, we have not seen a change in our revenue sources over 20-plus years. Property taxes continues to be just over 3/4 percent, 75% or 3/4 of the revenue we receive. If anything, you'll notice that from 2022 to 2023, the state portion has decreased and has sort of been filled with that other local category and a slight change in federal funds. One other revenue impact, we, I know we've talked at length during the two prior previous presentations about evidence-based funding. But this was a, a graphic that was made available by the State Board of Education last month. And I, I did think it was useful to just share and talk through from Indian Prairie's perspective, really what this means. So we're in our fifth full year of evidence-based funding, with it starting in the fiscal year of 2018. And so we're, as required by that state law, the, the state has formed a professional review panel that's looking at what the impact of evidence-based funding has been and what the student outcomes have been. And so as they, they start to do that work, they're really looking at, how is the money flowed through the formula? What districts are, are seeing the, the biggest impact? And maybe what changes have we seen in funding across the state? So I'll point out that in 2018, 18% of total student enrollment, and that's the top line there, which were in districts that were under 60% funded. As a result of the formula, almost 55% of the money that year went to those districts. And then you'll see that the other kind of student enrollment bands are 25%. We're districts from 60 to 70%. Just over 11% were from 70 to 79%, which is where Indian Prairie fell. And then, you know, about 27% or so were in, in districts that were at 80% or above. If we trace it down, you'll see that at, at a state level, we've almost eliminated districts that are under 60% funded. So as a state, that has been a success. However, you'll see some of the other bands, and specifically the bands that Indian Prairie are in, in that 70 and 80% bands, have really remained unchanged. And so what we've seen is that through five years, we've seen the funding has been sufficient to really raise some of those lower but it's not been sufficient to impact districts that sort of started at that 70% above level where, where we did. So again, as this impacts Indian Prairie, it, it really means, I think, we're still several years away from seeing a significant impact for us. I think we can continue to see about $700,000 to $900,000 over time, that's meant that the state percentage of funding has either maintained constant, consistent or has actually declined a little bit. And, and again, it would take some significantly more investment than the state already has put into the evidence-based funding model for us to see a significant change here at Indian Prairie. Again, when, when we do take that funding and we compare to sort of our neighboring or comparable districts, that means we continue to be below the state average for expenditures per pupil and continue to be significantly below our cohorts of districts. As you'll see, in 2021, Indian Prairie spent about $13,400 per pupil. That compares to a state average of about $15,700. And our seven other comparable districts range from $15,700 to $18,000, just short of $18,000. When we look at the 2002 expense per pupil numbers, so again, numbers from 20-plus years ago, this is pretty, pretty on trend. Again, about the only thing that's changed is about the colors and, and form of, of the graphs we use. But Indian Prairie, 20 years ago, was below the state average and was at the bottom of our peer group and is still in that position 20 years later. I'm just moving on to the expenditure highlights. Again, our, we've prioritized keeping staffing levels consistent despite projected decreases in enrollment. That has meant the focus on K2 reduction in class sizes, as well as being able to provide additional mental health supports by sort of reconfiguring our FTEs. This is the first year of updated agreements with both our IPA and EPC unit, unions. That has been included in this year's budget. We've also increased budgets across departments and across our schools to address the rising costs and be sure our schools are able to continue to support and provide additional support to our students in this inflationary environment. Moving on to our non-operating budget, we do have two non-operating funds. The first is our bond and interest fund. This fund is entirely funded by property taxes and pays the interest and principal payments related to our outstanding bonds. I, I will point out, our interest payments are fixed rate and they're not impacted by these, by recent interest rate increases. So we are seeing a benefit on the revenue side as a result of those rising interest rates. But we're not seeing a, a negative impact on the interest we pay. Again, our bond and interest fund will be in place until fiscal year 2027, when we make that final debt service payment on December 30th of 2026. And then finally, we do maintain a non-operating budget for capital needs. This budget does support the 50-for-50 capital initiative that myself and our Director of Building Operations presented in December 2021. We're excited to be able to provide $13 million worth of funding out of this fund. Should mention, where we get to that total of 16 million is that we are funding 3 million in capital directly from operating funds, too. This is going to be an exciting year from our capital team. And we're, we're getting ready for, for a busy year. In addition to the work that we're doing this summer and are planning to do, we're also looking to start a district-wide facility assessment and master plan. And we anticipate a completion of that work in May. and we anticipate a completion of that work in May of 2023. That'll be the plan that further guides our, our long-term capital plan and our capital spending for hopefully the next, at least five, but hopefully up to 10 years. Our last capital, similar assessment was done in 2014. So again, about an eight-to-10-year window on those plans. So with that said, our next steps for budget adoption is as follows. We have posted the budget at ipsd.org/businessoffice, where it will be available for public inspection as required by the school code. That required period is 30 days, it'll be up for slightly more than that. And that is legally required by the Illinois school code. Second, Board of Education meeting, we will hold a public hearing, again, as required, on this annual budget. And then we will ask the Board of Education to approve our budget for the 2022-2023 school year. This is slightly ahead of the required timeline. We are required to have that approval done by September 30th, so we will be about a month ahead. And that's ahead of where we've been the past couple of years as well. We are fortunate that we don't have as much uncertainty or moving pieces going into the school year as we have in the past. So we are excited to present this about a month earlier than we did last year for, for your approval. Finally, I just want to point out a few other upcoming Budget Office priorities. First, our annual audit of the 2022 fiscal year has started. That report should be available to the board and to the public in the late fall. We're also working with our communications team on producing an annual report, so a more public-facing and public-friendly version of, of the financial information will be included in that report. And we expect that to be available in late August or September of this year. In the last meeting in September, September 26th, Board of Education meeting, myself and our new Director of Building Operations, John Robinson, will be here to talk about the capital projects we just completed and to go into a little more detail of what our expectations are for that master facility plan we, we will be starting at that time. And then that will lead us into the November and December Board of Education meetings, where we will present the tenet of levy and final levy that do make up a significant portion of the, the property tax revenue we're budgeting for this school year. So with that said, I'm available for any questions on the 2223 Tenet of Budget.
So did I hear it was your birthday?
It is our Executive Director of Communications' birthday, Lisa Berry. No comment on if it's my birthday.
Happy birthday, even if it isn't.
No, no place I'd rather be.
So with that, I'll start with, how about Ms. Grover?
So you had mentioned capital projects that you were currently doing and that are going to happen. And I know part of the strategic plan is to have a facilities update. Is that all going to be in the strategic plan? What projects you're going to be working on in the next few years? And how many years do you think that you are going to be putting in the strategic plan?
Sure. Yeah, I could talk a little bit more about that master facility plan process, just kind of at a high level. It, it really does start with taking inventory of all 35 buildings and identifying what the needs will be over, over the foreseeable future. Again, generally over a 10-year time horizon. Once you get to do that assessment, you then prioritize. So you prioritize based on what's past due and what's really past due and what's really, really past due, right? So we'll, we'll work through that prioritization, prioritization process and that, then that will be what drives that, that workflow. So that will be, kind of be working down kind of parallel tracks as far as we'll be doing that process for sort of that 10-year plan, while we're also prioritizing what we're looking to do over the next six to 12 months. So, so those will be kind of working together to prioritize the work both in a short-term and long-term focus. And then I, our, our hope is for this to really be a comprehensive document. So in the past, when we've talked about facilities, we've really focused on building envelope. So roofs, mechanical, masonry, parking lots, other asphalt or cement needs. You know, we're looking to, to expand that focus to include, again, programming needs, get our technology team involved and have their discussion of what they feel that the technology vision is for the classrooms, get our educational leaders involved on what we need to do to be able to support 21st century learning and evolving classroom needs. We will include a security and safety assessment as part of that work too. And we will hopefully include environmental and sustainability concerns as part of that process too. So we're hoping for it to be very comprehensive in scope. It's not going to be a small undertaking. Again, we're, we're projecting it to take almost, almost a full fiscal year. But we do believe that, that at the end of that, we will have a document that really can provide a holistic and comprehensive view of, of what work we need to do over the next, again, seven to 10 years.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Rising.
So first of all, great presentation. Way to hit our top three district goals in the budget presentation. I think you hit all three of them, from helping all students to grow socially, emotionally, academically of what we've done with the budget this year, hire, retain high-quality effective teachers and staff, and manage resources effectively and efficiently. So you pretty much hit on all those things. I'm glad to see that we are continuing to live within our means of the revenue we receive. Very excited we were able to get the employment agreements renewed this year and still keeping within our budget. If you could go to slide 10 really quick, I will slightly disagree with you there. I know big picture, the numbers almost seem the same, but as you kind of had alluded to, back in 2002, our total state revenue was 24% and today it is 15%. Conversely, in 2002, we received local revenue at 74%. Now we're relying on local revenue at 81%. One of my frustration lies there is Illinois is one of the worst state-funded states for public education. They rely largely and majorly on, on local revenue. And that is a frustration for me. If you could go to the next slide, slide 11. Where I get frustrated with this is not only what you had mentioned in the area that we're in, which is the, let me go get, get my reading glasses on again, in the percentage of the blue that has relative, I believe we're in the blue, right?
Green.
No, we're not in the green, we're in the blue. The, the, the light blue, I should say, right? The 80 to 89%, is that where we lie?
Eighty to 89 is correct. Fiscal 22 and 83% funding.
So that, that percentage of evidence-based funding has been, that percentage has been, so that's the blue.
I can't, I can't circle it.
That's the blue, that's basically set third from the right color. And that's remained at 7.5, 6.4, 7.4, 7.9% of evidence-based funding. While I am empathetic, the blue to the left is CPS's funding and how it's continuously gone up year after year, while arguably their enrollment, all of our enrollments have gone down across the state, but CPS has significantly gone down and yet they've received more revenue and that is a frustration. And it should be something that we as a board and the community keep an eye on as they look at going forward with evidence-based funding. My point being here, if you could go to the next slide, is that this has led us to be under $2,000 of the state average of spending per students because of what we can receive from the state and locals. So when the community hears us as a board being frustrated with SIR funds or where we sit in evidence-based funding, or how we're CPI capped and yet locally, we are stewards of our taxpayers' money. We are also property taxpayers. And we get frustrated when we can't receive that money, not only on behalf of our taxpayers, but for our students and to help our students. And I think that's something I just wanted to get across, is when our community hears some of the frustration, it's due to that. But thank you, Matt, for balancing our budget again. And thank you to the administration for having a clear future for our students. So that's all I had.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you, Matt, and happy birthday. I was so happy to see how you listed the budget objectives, especially our commitment and prioritization of reducing classroom size. And the video was great, again, just reiterating the numerous benefits. I know I, I teach in higher ed, but just having one less student just allows for better feedback and more room for development and just some wiggle room, you know, to meet whatever needs the students may have on a given day. And so I'm proud of our administration and this board for continuing their, making this a priority. And so very happy to see that. And then, of course, I've seen how that would also support the next objective of mental health and our SEL objectives and things like that. So that's, that's really great to see. On slide 10, just a reminder for myself, and I know I asked you this last year, but if you could do it again, could you tell me what falls under the other local category, since so much of our funding comes from local?
Sure. So that, that other local, which makes up about 5% total, includes the, the annual registration and technology fees we charge our students, includes participation fees for, for athletics or other extracurriculars. It does include the, the lunch fees we charge. So again, that, that's had a, a change this year with, with us going back to charging for lunch. That, that's a component of revenue that's moved from federal to local. It does include our building rental fees. We do maintain a, a building rental program that, that helps, helps support some of our building maintenance and, and building funds. And then it does represent that investment income that we talked about, that, that we are budgeting for a significant increase of in this, this year.
Thank you for that reminder. I know I had asked you that last year.
I think I, the, the one I, the, I think I got them all. The one, the one other one is there is a, what's known as a replacement tax, which is considered a local fund too. So that's money we do receive through the state, but it's classified as a local revenue.
Okay. And kind of just extending the conversation from Board Member Rising on slide number 11. This is a hard slide to look at. And I know, I guess, can you, can you share some information on what's happening with evidence-based funding in terms of the reexamination of the formula and the timeline of that and where we are and how it looks for 204?
Sure. So it, it, sure, and this is, this is going to be challenging to say too. So again, part of the, part of the requirement, when evidence-based funding replaced the general state aid formula in 2018, one of the requirements was that there was a professional review panel put in place that was supposed to monitor the formula, how it was being used, potentially tweak it if, if they felt some of the, some of the, the drivers didn't, didn't align with current practices, et cetera. And, and there was a five-year sort of date for that first deadline for, for that sort of report. So we're, we're now at a point where the, the state, I, I believe through the General Assembly, has, has appointed that panel and that panel's began that, began that work. Myself and, and, and other members of the DuPage County have been involved in that process, working through our advocacy, advocacy group lens. So, so I do, do believe we'll continue to be part of those discussions and part of that process. But I think what this really tells us that if the objective of evidence-based funding was to address those lowest-funded districts under that, that target, it's, it's done that. Again, it's, it's taken 18% of students that previously were districts under 60% funded and, and moved them up into that, that 60 to 70 or 70 to 80% bar. The challenge is it has not been sufficient funding and it, or it's not been distributed in a way that is, is driving change at, at districts that started at a higher level, which again is where, where Indian Prairie is. And so, you know, in, in our, in my mind, the discussion is, well, either, either we need to put more money into this formula or we need to find other avenues, other, whether it's other state funding sources or, or tweaks to the evidence-based funding formula that, that will help address the needs of, of, you know, again, tier two and, and to a lesser extent, the tier three and tier four districts. Evidence-based fun, funding was designed with an equity lens. So it was designed to try and help the districts that have those, those students with the, the highest amounts of needs, whether that's the low, lower-income students or low-income counts, specialization, English language learners. But it was not, it was not designed to fund schools during a global pandemic or, or during inflation that's at the highest level we've seen in, you know, 40 years. So I think that, in, in my opinion, is where the conversation needs to go is, you know, there's an assumption built in here that some of those higher-funded districts, and again, they, they, with the amount of money that's put in, we're kind of in that higher-funded half, even though we, we know the challenges we have. You know, it, it didn't assume that like, that a district that was 76% property tax-funded would start losing property tax revenue to PTEL, for example. But that's where we are with, with the property tax cap. So again, I, I know I kind of put several thoughts out there. And again, it's still an evolving conversation, but at least I, I hope that gives some flavor of what the, the state's goal is or what the state's intention was with that professional review panel, as well as, again, what at least in my opinion are some of the challenges for, for our district.
Yes, thank you so much. I, I know that was a loaded question, but it helps contextualize what we're looking at and appreciate also the fact that we are providing annual reports, which I'm really thrilled about because I think the more information our community has in terms of our financial situation is a good thing. And so understanding this helps. Thanks so much.
Mr. Carubus.
I am interested in your expanded view of this facility assessment and master plan. I'd like to see that kind of take shape over the facility assessment and talking about a programming assessment, some more formality to that. And I understand that that's an undertaking and it's going to involve, you know, probably consultants and time to put together. Looking at slide 11, talks about 204's funding level being between 78 and 83%. And so I think it would be easy for us to tell the story of what it would take to get our percentage to 100, being a $64 million fund difference in order to get to 100%. And then drill down from there further, using the factors in the evidence-based funding formula. How many teachers is that? How many secretaries is that? That isn't as much of an endeavor. That shouldn't take until May. I would like to see something on that as far as our messaging and what, to tell our story, because it is good to compare to other districts and talk about the funding formula historically, but that's kind of in the abstract. And the slide is difficult to read, but that's produced by the state. And so I want to see what, how this impacts our district. And it doesn't hit home, say we're 83% funded, but it does say, in order for us to get to 100, that's going to take X amount of dollars. And why do we want that dollars? Because we want- Because we want, why more teachers in our district in order for us to have an adequately funded school system according to the state's formula? That's it.
Okay. Just a quick comment. That is, that is an analysis that is doable. I don't want to spoil our strategic plan, but I think that is part of what we have set as a goal to incorporate into part of our strategic plan action items. So I do anticipate being able to bring something to the board this fall with that information. And it is something that's doable because the evidence-based funding formula is very explicit in having targeted class sizes at different levels, having a targeted amount that, you know, it would say a fully-funded district should be spending on, you know, different types of resources or supporting teachers or on capital or building operations. So that is a analysis that is in some ways pretty explicitly built into the formula. So we will have something we could share with the board and the community this fall.
Thank you.
Ms. Fazdik.
Thank you for the presentation. Happy birthday. I have just a point of clarification that I want to ask you about first. You mentioned when you were talking at slide six, that we have $16 million available. It's the largest capital budget since Matia was completed, $3 million more than it was last year.
Three, just three million more than what we presented in May. In May, we were hoping to spend 13, but we've, through some grants and some other funds, are now recommending 16 as part of this tenant budget. This current year was, I think, nine million. So we are significantly increasing what we did in this past year.
So from May, when you were able to bump it up almost 20%, it sounded like half of that was from the capital grant.
That's correct.
I'm just underscoring the importance of grants for our funding and appreciation and the work that takes to go into those. But that's a huge portion. You know, when I came onto the board, I learned more about the fact that we've been putting off capital improvement because we've been trying to put the needs of our students first and our teachers, and we're doing that here with mental health and SEL and class sizes. But our students need a safe place to learn, right? An innovative, safe place to learn. And our teachers need, like you said, 21st century learning spaces too. So I'm really glad that we are able to bump that up and hopefully in time, if we're able to find a way to have more funding, that that's something we can also continue to support over time. So thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. And I would just reiterate, in the past, with our capital budgets, we have prioritized that safe space to learn. So our buildings have been and will continue to be safe from a building code perspective, from a safety and security perspective, where we hope this additional money really hits is on that innovative word that you used, that ability to really impact programming and have a more of a direct impact on the programming spaces.
Thank you.
Ms. Dumbing.
I will follow Matt and say happy birthday. Slide six, which we've already talked a little bit about, but $16 million that we'll be able to do for capital projects this year, where does that relate as far as our overall budget in the past? We prioritize safety, as you said, but we haven't been able to reach what that recommendation was. Are we close? Are we there or?
Yeah, good question. So the last facility assessment we had done was in 2014 and the recommended amount was about nine million a year. We, I think, all but one year have not hit that nine million. As a result, you kind of roll that number forward, it kind of grows and I think the number's realistically probably closer to 12 million now. And again, we're far enough away from that past assessment that we're kind of ready to do the process again. But, so yes, with 16 million, we're above where we've been. I think we are at or above what that annual requirement would be for the first time in many years.
Fantastic. And I will say that it was really exciting news to hear that we're at the final stage for our elementary school here concerned. So that's been something that's been talked about ever since Lori and I got, before Lori and I got on the board. So that is exciting news. I had a question on slide seven. Our fund balance, 36.8%. Where does that, where do we, where does that relate as far as where we've been in the past? Is that, or are we in a, I believe we are, but we're in a good position? Can you kind of talk about?
Yeah, that has increased over the past several years. We've traditionally been in the low 30s, so it is increasing slightly. Again, the requirement from the State Board of Education is 25%. So we are above that. You know, one thing I'll point out, we are in a, in an environment where for the next couple of years, because of inflation, we will see some significant revenue and expense increases. And as that top line increases, even if your fund balance stays the same, the percentage goes down. And so we are recommending a balanced budget tonight, but it's slightly balanced. And as a result, that actually would take that fund balance percentage back down. So I think we will get, if we do that for a couple of years, we would get a little lower than the 36.8 we're showing here, but we would still be above that 25% threshold.
And then on, I just wanted to point out that slide, slide 13, but slide, yes, slide 13. You know, again, kudos to getting our contracts taken care of at the time that we did and kudos to the district, your work, but as well as to IPEA and IPCA for the partnership and understanding where we stand from a budgetary standpoint, from a cost-per-pupil standpoint, that revenue and operating expense and, you know, that difference that we see as far as what that state expenditure is. But their understanding and working with us and working to keep our students first of thought in being able to achieve what many districts are not able to achieve, and that's having before the deadline. So it's extremely important and it impacts, you know, our students, but just our ability to operate. So just kudos on that again. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I, you know, I'll just second the collaboration that we have with both unions. We believe these are updated agreements that are win-win agreements, that are providing competitive salary and benefits for their members, that are allowing us to continue to attract talented teachers and teacher assistants and secretaries, but are also financially sustainable for the district.
So thank you to Ms. Dumbing and Ms. Fazdik for bringing up the capital history or whatever because I think it's, for people who don't regularly watch the board meeting, this was a very complicated presentation on budget and capital expense. As you pointed out, we have hired a consultant in the past who, how many years ago? Five years ago total. So we should be spending nine million a year to maintain our building's basic maintenance. And we were spending as low as three million, I recall, one year because we did not have enough funding. So we're behind and Mr. Krubus loves to bring this up, favorite topic. So it was very positive to see we were able to find 16 million for this year, but that doesn't catch us up to where we have delayed many, many things that are critical for us. Also, I'm going back to slide 11, everybody's favorite complex slide, because we talked about it a lot, but just again, for the audience, I mean, Illinois puts school districts in very simple form in tiers. Tier one being the least funded and tier four being the best funded. And our district is a tier two, so second from the poorest, right? Penultimate of the poorest. And that, if I understand it, that there were manipulations going on so that the City of, the Chicago Public Schools is a tier one district and tier one has been receiving the vast majority of any increases in evidence-based funding that the state has put in over the last few years. And actually was improving Chicago Public Schools' position in the tiers, in the tier one school, so that they might have been moving into a tier two state with us, where then we could see all of the tier two schools probably benefit from any additional funding. But that the formula is somehow being changed so that they stay as tier one? Is that correct?
Yeah, there is, again, part of this professional review panel is looking at some of the drivers and one piece that's been talked about that I'm aware of so far is that low-income component. And again, tweaks to that would have a significant impact on not just Chicago Public Schools, but several other districts. So that is one change that is potentially out there that could benefit CPS. And the other piece that I think was alluded to in Board Member Rising's question, but they also, one tweak they did make that was approved by the state in, during the pandemic, was that the total enrollment number has changed how it's calculated too, in a way that had a benefit towards Chicago Public Schools. It sort of had a hold harmless component for districts that were seeing declining enrollment. And again, with many districts, including Indian Prairie, are seeing declining enrollment, but Chicago Public Schools is declining quicker than others. And so that was another benefit that did benefit them. Again, I think it speaks to why we're trying to work with our leaders, our advocacy groups, as well as, as well as directly with our representatives as necessary to be able to tell our story and, you know, try and, try and work through the challenges and work through the funding formula in a way that's equitable to all districts, but does represent Indian Prairie's voice in the process.
Yeah, I think that advocacy is important. I'm not sure how successful that would be, but it is something that we need to focus on. I guess when I roll all of that up, it means that we shouldn't expect to be receiving a lot more funding from the state and we will continue to have heavy, heavy dependence on local funding for our district and a lot of creativity of our district to bring out the results that we have with 80% funding.
Yeah, and again, this is, I would agree with that unfortunately, but we'll continue to, again, to work and to advocate for the district and if we're not successful, to at least make the best of the resources we do.
I mean, it seems like we're kind of in the middle, right? Because tier one school districts aren't going to lobby for the formula change in most cases. Tier four and tier three probably really don't care that much. So it's like the tier ones, twos that are like, hey, I want this to shift so tier twos get more funding.
We are definitely stuck in the middle. And that's a good way of thinking of it.
Yeah. So thank you very much for the presentation. Always very insightful and helpful. So thank you and happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right. The last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. And I think I would like Natasha and Allison just to say a couple of words about the governance. I'm surprising you, just for the benefit of the board.
So the Governance Award is an IASB award that we apply for every two years. A district fills out an application. So we had completed it two years ago. So this year it is due on August 1st and it would cover the period 2020 to 2022. And so Allison and I have been working on the application, getting all the documents together to submit and we will submit it by August 1st.
Week and a half.
Yep. I saw a draft and it was a lot of work for them to put together.
To be fair, I think I should point out that this is a learning experience for me and Natasha completed the majority of this with some guidance from me and some learning and teaching moments for me to learn how to look at it going forward. So I just want to give her credit where credit's due. She's done by far the lion's share of this.
And we have a history of being awarded the Governance Award, so hopefully it will repeat itself this coming year. That's because we have an excellent group that knows all about governance. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Oh, second, who's the second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.